All right, I will call the meeting for Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three to order to seven o'clock. And then we can do a roll call. A trustee Brandon here, trustee McGregor.
Here.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Trustee Ratch.
Here.
Trustee Taylor. He is not in committee. And trustee Gerf.
President.
Okay. At this time, we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence after. I pledge allegiance to the.
One nation under the.
Thank you. Senator. We're down to number four. Motion to approve the consent agenda for the meeting minutes and vouchers.
Second.
Joe. Okay, sorry. I got a motion in second by. Second, you. By Caleb. Any discussion?
I have a little question. I noticed that the attorney's retainer, he was a thousand, but then it was another bill for four thousand thirty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Is that above and beyond, and what are them for?
I think that's the normal, the normal, the retain of beef. And then, from my understanding, it must be extra work just being done with the different things we have going on, NEPCO, the recreation department, the tuition, those kinds of things.
Do we have enough then budgeted for the year for the attorney fees, or is that something built in, or?
Yeah, we only have twelve thousand allocated, one thousand per month. We don't really go above and beyond for attorney's fees. So, right now, with that expenditure, we're basically exhausted. Our attorneys, we'd have to, they'll have to be discussed with FHR and moving some money around to cover that.
Okay.
Yeah. Also likely from, because it's gonna be having to be relied on for administrator-type questions. That kind of. But we wouldn't have the administrator's salary.
Okay. I guess it's something to consider that we're already there at our max on the budget.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, and then I had just one other question quickly is the mural, I see we already cut the check for six thousand dollars, correct Diane? So then, and they're gonna fundraise the, correct, the rest? They're here.
Anything else on the meeting minute or the agenda, meeting minutes, what about? No, okay, we have a moment in a second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Public comment on the agenda items, it looks like. Carly would like to speak, is it on the agenda item, or what agenda item is it, I'm sorry?
It is based on the, what I spoke on a recent meeting that's in the meeting minutes of this packet.
Okay, that's not on an agenda item?
Not specifically, in regards to the meeting minutes.
Okay. How do we generally? It's in, it's in regards to the meeting minutes, is that?
Go ahead.
For which, which?
For public safety. Yes, right, for public safety.
Yeah, that's, that's within your authority.
Okay, so do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait for public safety?
I can speak now.
Okay. There's that three-minute time limit. I'll get that time later, sure.
Um, let me be fair. So I spoke recently at a meeting, it was in regards to a meeting that took place here on June seventh. And it was recorded and uploaded to the Fort Edwards, the Village of Fort Edwards YouTube channel. Myself, a child, and others watched this June seventh meeting, and we were very, we're very concerned. As you can see in this packet, it mentioned in the meeting minutes, I explained at this last meeting all of my concerns in detail. And what was involved in the June seventh meeting here that was so concerning to me. It involved what I witnessed and what others witnessed to be board members here in London. What I believe strongly to be verbally abusing Chief Jason Warden. While. President. Sorry, President Betsy Mansell, while President Betsy Mansell remained silent and complicit, in my strong opinion. I am wondering, and so are many others, if there is anything actively being done about what had happened, what had transpired at that June seventh meeting. Specifically, if anything is being done about Sarah Grunden and her actions that day.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a point of order. The constituent does have the right to speak, of course, with three minutes. She cannot single out a trustee. So I'd ask you to rule on that.
To rule on?
Whether to uphold my point of order.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
We can't discuss anything right now, it's for public comment, and we generally don't respond back. That's just how policy, called the Robert, Roberts Rule orders works. We have it noted, but there's a point of order, so at this point, do you have anything else to say?
I just want to say, I sincerely hope that there is some serious consideration in what I have said. And that the board will look into proper actions to be taken against the individual. I, myself and others are very concerned and feel very strongly about this. And it doesn't look good for the board, these kinds of things, and people are watching very closely. Thank you, thank you.
Anybody else on public comment? Okay. We will go down to president's reports. Number six, committee of the whole was the June twelfth meeting that was to discuss our. The departure of our administrator and what we are doing soon forward. The interim administrator position has been posted to the League of Wisconsin municipalities. We did have one person express interest, and that was last night. I passed the information on to the FHR committee. So they will be handling not only this one, but any other applicants that do come through. That one, otherwise, Buzz, have you seen anything? I haven't seen anything else coming through.
No, the, just for everyone's knowledge, the post that we have, the league municipalities monitors how many hits. So since we posted it three weeks ago, there's been over a hundred and thirty hits on it. And we have a taker, so. Reaching out to the league, and I'll leave that contact information with Diane, she's able, she could find out how many more hits were coming. In your packet, there's the two agendas for those meetings, and the president sent me, because I was not at those meetings, the president sent me some, the minutes for one of them. So I owe you the minutes for both of those meetings, they're pretty cut and dry, you just discussed actions on hiring. So I would probably defer both of those minutes to your next board meeting, that they'll be done. I have one done right before this meeting, but it's not in the packets.
And then, that was the, well, that was June twenty, yeah, then the other one was the fire department discussion, which we've referred to the PFC, and I'm assuming Chairman Stewart might touch on that later. Because that was a closed session. So, the other thing, the other couple things I want to touch on is the probably of life survey that I did send out to board members last, last night to review the results, we only had eighty-six surveys completed. Twenty-seven of those came from the same IP address, so it looks like it was the same person doing multiple, multiple, multiple surveys, there were a couple other identical IP addresses, but I think those were like, it was a desktop at home, and two people may have used the, you know, husband-wife or whatever situation. Really eighty-six, even if eighty-six surveys, that's not a good enough sample size, so I think we're gonna have to look out for a better way to to grab some of that data besides just Facebook, there's a lot of residents who maybe don't, aren't using Facebook. And then we can maybe figure out a more reliable situation for one person not to fill out twenty-seven surveys, so we might have to explore some more options that way. Other than that. I'm gonna take this time to thank Buzz, this is his last meeting with us, this is his last week with us here. And on past three years, Buzz has done some great things for our village. The initiative that we're taking on wouldn't have been done. Took the bull by the horns and take, took a lot of initiatives to help our village grow. You were able to secure and utilize in a substantial amount of grant money for our community that helped out. And then helped develop our plans, use for the fifth money and effectively help revitalize our downtown. So with that, I just want to say thank you, I wish you good luck on your future endeavors, and I hope you and your sweet family enjoy what is yet to come. And just to remember us in the middle of January when you're soaking up the Florida sun, so with that.
I almost said another bad word.
Oh. There it is. Glad for you to.
Thank you very much.
Remember us, I appreciate it.
I mean, this has been an amazing experience, leaving the military and coming to work.
With a bunch of civilians.
No, it's been amazing, the, the village is amazing, the people are amazing, you all, the previous board, all great. Learned a lot, and I, I hope, well, I know there's two things that weren't here the days I'm leaving. I could eat next door now. And there's a lot of dirt being pushed out front, and I'm, as, as an engineer, it makes my heart warm, so. So I appreciate being able to leave on what I'll call a high note, just two small projects and many more, and you all made that happen, not just me, so I appreciate the individual help, as well as all the residents that have been great from the day ones. Thanks.
Could, could you read what's on the plaque?
Uh, that is Ray Boss, Bosser, Village Administrator, Fort Edwards, from May twenty-twenty to August twenty-twenty-three, our little Chris, there you go.
That look good on your wall in Florida.
You have a lot in my I love me room, it grows all the time. Christie will be very happy.
The state of Wisconsin, you know, that one sticks out.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, since your wife is a native Badger, I'm sure this one will be put behind some military thing, it will be from the center.
Yep.
All right, number seven. Committee reports, the airport commission, not doing this.
Not much to say, the only highlight is that we hired Short Elliott Henderson as a consultant on our airport master plan last month, and they have done, oh geez. Probably for the last fifteen years, they've been involved with the airport and smaller projects and stuff like that, and now the fund will begin, and we will, I will keep you posted as to what is in the air as far as our master, excuse me, master plan itself. And next month, I won't be able to report anything on it, because our meeting set for June, or July thirteenth has been canceled for lack of items. I know, Shane, Shane told, wanted me to tell you, Madam President, Shane is the mayor in Rapids, and he's, he's, he's just sad about it.
I'm sure he is, yeah. Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Police and Fire Commission, Chairman Stewart.
Thank you, Madam President, we last met on six twenty. That was regarding disciplinary matter with the commissioners, at the end of that session, sent back a message to the submitter and the board indicating the charging documents were improper formatted. And we gave some advice as to what the law requires, how they should be submitted. And we're waiting a response at this point, and if there's no response, we'll consider the matter closed. But as, as officially, that is pending, for, as far as we're concerned. The next meeting is gonna be held next, this coming Monday, the seventeen. And in that agenda, we have review background criminal investigator, criminal background checks. Phase one of three new applicants, there have, that's Alex Mataki and Jennifer Salazar and Cassidy Sears. We have also received some recommendations from the fire chief as to who he recommends to fill some open position, officer positions within the fire department. And those are. Man Flotter for Assistant Chief, and Kerry Smith for Captain, and Jeff Hadley for Lieutenant. So what we'll do during our meeting is we'll examine their training records with the chief, which the chief has provided to us, and we'll compare those with the position, training expectations that were set some years ago. And then we'll, you know, have some discussions with the chief, and we'll go from there. That's all set for our draft agenda on Monday, this coming Monday. And beyond that, I don't have anything else. Is there any questions I could answer for anyone?
How many candidates do you have?
We have, well, let me, let me go back, we have one candidate that we've gone through the whole process with the exception of the medical exam and the phase two, which is like this really in-depth background investigation. And his name is Jordan Pooks. I, if you remember, I told you about him about a month ago, that he was missing in action, we were worried, we hadn't talked to him in weeks, we've been calling, he hasn't called back, we found him. And he's still interested, and now we're just putting together the last couple of things he needs to do before we hire him, but we're still excited to hire him. He just has to get through a couple of things. And then we, these new three applicants, kind of more of the preliminary phases of employment. But as soon as we get through their criminal investigation report, that Scott Drew will be sharing with us at the meeting. We will schedule interviews for those folks who, if, if they're acceptable regarding criminal background, and then we go to the next phase. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Your chair, okay. Public Works.
Public Works, we met on June twenty-first. Listen, we need on summer activities, the alleyways are completed. Some storm work has been going on. The chip ceiling will be taking place here, I believe, at the end of July, you know, August, correct, ceiling. Also, you can see that we are doing the project out here in front, hopefully that will be done in a couple weeks. They're going to town on it, and we also had the second street, which needs to be, we had the engineering done. But we will have to have that budgeted for next year, do that project, that's gonna be a, a bigger project. Other than that, our next meeting will be. Take a look here, it will be the nineteenth at four PM. Oh, I have no other update.
Okay, any questions for Chairman Ruckey? Public Works. Thank you. Parks and Recreation.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna ask for your permission to defer to a noncommittee member, our outgoing village administrator. All we got going on, the person that was acting chair while I was up north working hard is not here to talk about what went on at the meeting. So I do need your permission to go to a non-board member, and I would like Buzz to, since we're talking about the mural.
Diane, please chime in if that's something. So, Parks and Rec Met, we had the Wood County Leadership Group was here, presented their mural case, you should have a hard copy of the mural. This was what they left with us from the artist's rendering, so he's remembered that side wall. carve it up in three parcels, this is the first segment, there'll be a middle and then the far end, eventually the potential that three murals. Very well designed, because the community enjoyed the thing, the only addition was adding a logo of the established year, it should be on your copy there. They added that as well as in the top corner for the village, so. That was approved by the committee, what the motion is, is, is really approving the concept sketch. Because the TID grant was already approved at administrator level, and also vetted by FHR for the financing of this, which we came up to a, a twelve thousand dollar worst-case scenario cost for the entirety from the install to the, the maintaining of it with a seal coat type thing. And, and the discussion at the committee was that if the village could participate in a fifty percent grant, then the committee, or the Wood County folks' leadership would don't raise, fundraise the remainder from some of their big donors that, and I'll, I can let them speak specifically on it. So before I get into the motion, any questions on the mural or comments, I can let the Wood County folks speak.
Colonel, if our fifty percent is raised by, is that the, the grant you were just talking?
Six thousand, yes, yeah, so we, we went with the TID economic grant artwork amount. And once it was presented, I presented that to the FHR folks, and they were comfortable with that being the amount and the grant. But it was based on they were able to raise the other six thousand dollars, yeah. And the reason we cut the check early is because to get the artwork going and, and lock in the artists, we needed a down, down posit, and they didn't, they weren't ready to execute that right now, so.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, you have anything to add, if you don't mind, if I go, what did?
Anybody have an objection for them? Throw up table, okay.
You too, anything?
Yeah, just that we're really excited for the opportunity, and for those that I haven't gotten to meet before, my name is Nathan Pym, I'm the marketing sales manager at the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. And murals we've seen, we have seen in our industry have been a huge drop, especially after COVID, people want to get outside and just see nice things. So that's why we've been pushing for this bureau, and, yeah, our plan is to reach out to some donors, we have started communications with Solaris because they're directly involved, being inside of, of that wall, and we have some other contacts we're reaching out to and slowly starting to do that donor outreach. We are just waiting on final approval of the design before we send that to those donors and say, this is what we're hoping to make, how are you willing to help, Ted?
Any questions for?
So that being said, I'd ask for a motion to approve the mural concept sketch and support the use of matching fund grant of six thousand dollars from the Village TID Economic Development Grant. Or second? Maybe. A second?
So we have a first by Grunden, a second by McGregor, any other discussion on the grant? Or the artwork, sorry. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, and then the last two points was the Village Calendar for July twenty-twenty-three was approved, the main event is just the Lions picnic coming up. And then there was a discussion on the whole DMI Riverwalk Bike Trail, I believe the, the intent is a possible reworking of the legacy grant to ask for an addendum, I'll call it, that we can utilize that funds to, to, to improve our existing bike trail, as well as take it possibly a different route. I, I don't want to get ahead of the next meeting, but that was the intent. What is on the table right now is that DMI was allowing the ability to just run right down the main road. Put a fence up on both sides and connect to the back road, the old highway, and then run it up to Nakusa. The only new news after the committee is that DMI is willing to pay for the fence. Since it's a fence that will be removed. And I was telling them that that's a hard thing for us to do, spend a lot of money on a fence that we're just gonna tear it down in a few years. DMI came back, says, we like the idea of you putting the bike trail through, and we'll pay for the fencing. So that may be a good discussion to have at the next committee, because then that saves us close to seventy-five thousand dollars that they will pay for.
Does that follow the old Wisconsin River Drive through the?
Yes. Through the? It'll connect to the back gate filtration road, and it'll, we'll pick up, go by the sanitation plant out to Urco. So the fencing that's right here on both sides of the road, Wisconsin River Drive. It's about seventy-five thousand, eighteen thousand dollars. DMI was fully willing to, to commit to that, and then all our legacy money would be used for, for the resurfacing, so that'll be the discussion at the next Parks Committee.
Can I ask the follow-up? Yeah. Why are they willing to pay for that?
They, they want, they want some progress going down there, and they like the idea of a, of, of access point. They have a it's not too tied into that, they have a, I was gonna talk to my report, they have a project manager, they're gonna start demolition work this summer. So there's stuff going on there, and they thought this would be a good thing to actually get. The work they're gonna do is gonna be demo, this shows that there's something being built, and that's kind of what they're excited about. And that's all I have, so if you have any questions on Parks and Rec.
We've been demoing for seven years.
Yes.
Leave it when we see it.
Yep.
Anything else for parks? Doesn't bring any one for it.
Yeah, anything else for parks?
No, I thought it's a wonderful job.
Thank you, sir.
All right, um, check committee.
It met July sixth, we had lots of NEPCO conversations. One of the big one, we're having some preliminary conversations on the HOA road. What options we may have. What options we may not have, how we could proceed, we are waiting and gonna speak about getting the attorney that has been helpful in that and joining us at our next meeting. We also discussed the update on the lake transition. Just a reminder for everyone, nothing will change in two thousand twenty-four. We will start to receive taxes from them two thousand twenty-five, January two thousand twenty-five. And that will be approximately two hundred and fifty thousand annually, which will be approximately forty percent of our revenue. Joe, did you say something? No, okay. Then the Lake District update, I was late joining on that call, then what was the, when are they gonna start with the weed cutters?
They started today, fix them, so they're repairing them.
Where are they gonna start with cutting weeds?
They're hiring a person tomorrow, I don't see them cutting weeds probably till late next week, and they're gonna start on the east side. The county park side.
Okay.
Two days cutting on that side, two days cutting on the west side.
So we had, we were gonna wrap up the chapter eight ordinance, but we, the, our attorney said he had some concern with the language, so we held on that, and then on chapter five, we were ready to wrap that up, but we had questions on where his thought process was it, was coming from, so we're taped on that. So with that, we did work on, and we're bringing the motion today, I'll make the motion to approve the language regarding the donation policy for the village.
Motion by Grunden. Do you have a second?
A second.
Second by Norman, any discussion on the donation policy?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of know about it.
It's quite lengthy, it's in the packet.
Let me just, oh, one paragraph, sorry. Because I don't believe we ever had one before.
No, that's why.
Okay.
So it was at the recommendation of NEPCO that basically anybody, whether it be, you know, one of the mills, anybody, a nonprofit, an organization, a school district, anything. We would, with this policy, number one, bring it before the board, like say somebody donated a bunch of books. And we looked at him and said, this is not really gonna work for us, we would then bring it to the board and, and say thanks or no thanks. Or what would the cost be to maintain in the long run, you know, weighing how helpful that would be, or if it would be too much of a liability? This is the very short version.
Sure.
But, and then we would basically document it. Decide on it and document it.
How does that affect a group like Legacy? I mean, you, you, I guess what I'm getting, I have no proof of this, but it's just a.
Legacy is a grant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be different.
Well, yeah, but there's some people that might donate kind of substantial money, is this gonna scare them away, some people that want to donate, you think, I mean, I don't know, this is all new to me.
I think that, like, especially in the substantial money, they appreciate the tax benefit. I think that, like, especially in the substantial money, they appreciate the tax benefit. You, you know, and and there are places that will ask that their information would be kept private. So it's if they want it that way. You know, for a private person like that.
Then my last question, Madam Chair, would be how long? Has the committee been working on this?
I think, well, we didn't have it last month. So I don't remember. I sent it right after.
That they weren't going. Discussing.
I have a question. Um, so now like a lot of people I know have donated plagues for Wisconsin River Drive. And people have donated benches that have been out here with memorial benches. Is every time somebody make a donation of a plague or a bench, is that coming back to us that we have to? Accept or approve?
In here and I don't remember.
Okay.
Supervisor below fi- five hundred or below a supervisor level supervisor level employee can accept and then from five hundred to two thousand, the village administrator.
For example, books was a little.
I don't know that we put two thousand caps. I don't know that that, why would we, what would we do after the two thousand?
Then it's a board action.
So this is on the same playing field, sort of like with state grant or when we uh. Put out bids for something. It so if it's under two thousand dollars. You're gonna approve it?
Sure, your administrator is in departments, yeah.
And then over two thousand, we'd have to.
Okay, it'll come to this board for do you want to accept it?
Thank you.
Anything else? Did that answer your questions?
We're not as slow as you look over here.
Yeah, so someone would come into the office with a five hundred dollar check as a donation for the police department, fire department. We have to say, oh, we can't take that. We have to check with the administrator. Or.
Well, five hundred, you can take it.
And I think cash donations, we weren't that separate.
Offers of donations of cash or items valued at five hundred or below. May be accepted by supervisor level.
But yes, to answer your question, five oh one, yep, it it go to the village administrator.
So we would turn it down right then or take it?
Not turn it down, but um communicate that we'll have somebody call you to receive that and.
So not take the check until.
I don't know with inflation, should we make that a thousand? I was being serious.
Alcohol, he just says, uh, the. All regulation is is similar to his. Uh. We're banning a employee from utilizing alcohol on duty, not the physical location. His recommendation is, if you want to deal with locations, be it shelters, be it this building, wherever. That is addressed in an ordinance language, but not in the employee handbook because there's many examples where. Uh at five o'clock when I'm off the clock of my employment and there's an event here with Urco or anything. And they're serving alcohol and we allow that as a part of their rental of this space. Then if you have that employees can't drink anywhere on village park property. Then it becomes a twenty four seven, three sixty five, and that just becomes a administrative nightmare. We're always sending out exceptions of policy for individuals. So his recommendation is address it while on duty. And if you want to go more stringent on locations, treat it in the ordinance language. And that's what he sent back.
So I think we kind of concluded we may work on that later because. Um, we do have it in our ordinance that already outlines it. For the parks and whatnot. So anybody that rents a building. In the park, they're gonna have a party. It is in the ordinance allowing that. So we. There it's kind of conflicting at that point. The top of the policy says there's no alcohol on village property. For village or in the workplace.
Yep.
So that still covers it, that there's no alcohol in the village workplace, but then according to the ordinance. It is allowed in parks, but you can't let go walking out of the park. You can't be walking around. So we're kind of covered, so. Um, again, the top of it does say. No alcohol or how does it word that? No alcohol or?
It just said alcohol free workplace.
Does it say drugs too?
Yeah.
So and then what we, and Nick was clear on the. Legal aspects of that or was it insurance also?
Yeah, I think the insurance trained into, but.
So. It does cover it, no alcohol in the workplace, which would cover on hours, off hours. If you go to a party or something in our, you know, rented buildings, that would be different, that would go under the ordinance.
Any other discussion on the handbook? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? We're accepting the employee handbook.
Alright.
Bye.
Any opposed?
Okay, it was also brought up um. A motion to recommend the base performance evaluation of three public works employees. Uh one grade level. This would state effect on August first, two thousand twenty three. Um Dave Black would move up to grade two. Caleb Presley would move up to grade three and Brady Reiman to grade four. This is usually. Um. After a player's been here for so long, these are common. Performance evaluations and upgrades.
So.
Second buzzer, second buzzer. Any other discussion on them? No. Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed?
And we will meet on August third at four o'clock will be our next meeting. Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you. Okay. I would say committee.
Okay. Um. We had a, we had two meetings in this last month, uh starting with a special called meeting on June twenty second. And that was to um. With one item to discuss, I'm going to. That have Boz recall the nature of of the reason for the special call. There was a. A temporary suspension of of some duties with a that needed to be addressed pending a a discussion from.
Oh, it was.
Public safety.
Boss wanted to bring forward the um recommended addendum to an S O G.
Yeah, the uh at at the. Yeah, but what was, I was gonna say, what was what prompted that?
Well, the public safety meeting, there was a directive that present a. A chief. Deriven of uh. Policy to address the concern from the public safety meeting. And rather than wait thirty days for the next public safety meeting to not put there in limbo, the request was to get a special meeting called that if. To see if his recommendation was acceptable to the committee. And that's what drove the.
Yeah.
Facial hairs, C B A masks.
Well, I know the content of the meeting. I just, it was what was led up to it that I needed refreshing. So um the discussion was uh facial hair. Um with the firefighters, um plus a proposed policy adjustment from the fire chief. He presented that. Uh policy uh uh. A uh. An amendment to an existing uh standard operating guideline. Um. There was no action taken, uh but out of that meeting, we did. Uh give a directive to do some research with some OSHA offered alternatives. And uh that research was done by Boz and by Assistant Chief. Uh. Tim Leverance and we haven't received the results of that yet, but um the alternatives are limited. And not exactly a one to one and but will that will be brought up to the next uh our August meeting. So that was, that was the one topic for the special call. Uh for our normal called meeting, July fifth. Um. Chief Drew uh gave his report. Um. The uh, he says, no new information on the School Guardian Act grant. That was a grant he heard of. Uh for the federal government to take some, I think it was CIA money, uh CIA money for um. To put a. Um.
S R O.
S R O in every school. Thank you for the words. S R O in every school. So he said, no information on where that is. Um. Uh. Both uh department chiefs have been giving us Lexipol updates. Um. And uh for the fire department that we have a uh. A goal to get the Lexipol uh policies updated before the uh. License. Uh not really license, uh. Renewal comes in January and so was that uh Chief Warden, was that presented last? Can I, can I go off table to ask him a question? Was was the uh, well, Lexipols, were they?
Yeah, so we were finishing the the copies. He's making ten copies of that book and and Chief will pick them up for all as white shirts.
Yeah, that wasn't what I was gonna ask you. I was actually gonna ask you bylaws. Was that presented at the last meeting?
Bylaws, yeah.
Okay, that was the question was bylaws. Um. And still waiting on new parts for the new squad. We have a new squad, but it's not yet outfitted. We're waiting for those parts. Um, and both chiefs were also um asked to compile some information on the requirements with their equipment. Um, knowing already that part of their uh process of. Uh. Getting new equipment also involves, they they you generally know the expiration of things too. So just, we wanted to make sure that it was a. An accumulative list. Um, that was based on a conversation, concerns about. Tires, but through uh the report, they seem to be compliant uh with the standard um. Requirements for fire truck tires. Um. It's been a big discussion was the EMS budget um prompted not only by the. Of our ambulance service through the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department. Um but also uh we're gonna be looking closely the next couple of months at the current year's uh expenses for EMS. Because it is a very expensive part of the fire department. And so we have a few options of what we can uh do. Uh, the options as listed here, no changes, just augment the budget at that time when we look at twenty twenty four. Cancel the coverage uh or reduce the call rates or cost for the EMS calls. And we will be reviewing the next three months for future discussion as we enter into the third quarter of this year. Um. Facial hair, the conversation continued into our regular called meeting. Um, but that prompted us to um invite. Uh April Hammond, who is the District Two Fire Prevention Coordinator. Uh to come to our next meeting in August, um so that we can get an interpretation of the laws and perhaps some practical. Uh things that we can do with regards to facial hair and and uh masks. Um. See here, uh, I suppose, yeah, so um. We hope to uh get a final draft of the. Fire Department bylaws by next meeting to approve uh and send up to the board for approval. And um. That was all for the public safety.
Okay, I just had uh one thing, Caleb, is we're still waiting for parts for the new squad. My um assumption was that. Maybe I'm wrong, that we're waiting for a radio that was not gonna come in until the end of August.
You know, that is right. It was the radio part.
My question is, why don't we take the radio from the old car and put it in there? And get rid of that old car before it nickels and dimes us because, you know, I looked in the expense report, we have a two hundred and some dollar. Um tire repair on the old squad. We have a brand new one sitting there, not in use. I, I guess maybe if you can bring that up at the next public safety, I think that we need to get rid of the old equipment before we start. um having more major problems. I don't know how many miles are on squad. Well, it would be one or two, but I think we need to get that in service. And if we can take the radio and put it in this other car, I think that we need to do it as soon as possible and get to get things rolling.
Okay.
Just the condom.
Yeah.
Other than that, I have nothing.
Right, and we um our next meeting is August fourth at four P M.
Will you go off the table to ask the fire chief a question, reference the forty percent increase for EMS service?
No objection.
If uh this, I know you can't give me a basic price, but is there an average of uh, you know, them coming down for EMS call, you know, like if it's a hundred dollars, you know, forty percent means it's going up to a hundred and forty. But this isn't something that you would really be looking to not have them come down and serve service anymore, would it? Were you talking about the first responders? Yeah, I mean, the ambulance, Rapids ambulance, that's a forty percent increase.
Yeah, that's 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 their increase. Yeah, I I have no control over that.
No, I know that, but that wouldn't make you wanna look elsewhere for uh ambulance service, would it?
I mean, the option's always there. Uh we've been very happy with Rapids ambulance. They're they're coverage is top notch.
Have we been how long? We've been with them now five years?
Yeah, somewhere around there, four, five years.
Okay. Sorry, what didn't give you a clearer statement?
No, it's fine. I I don't know if you meant you know, forty percent. Yeah. You meant forty percent increase on our end or?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I guess I just have one more thing uh with Mr. Trustee Servlo's comment. Um it might not be, I know that there's United. Would it be a bad thing for the public's safety committee or the village board to I guess shop around?
It would be a bad thing.
Well, it's kind of like cable or anything else. I think that we should at least let them.
Do you want your cable on or not? That's the bad thing of it.
You can always ask the question, but.
Yeah. Or the other thing is, is if we go outside of our village limit, then we need to charge for EMS. Or not EMS, but uh first responder. I don't know how many calls are outside the village limits. I guess I'd have to look at that.
We do get reimbursed for some of that. All of it? Some of it?
No, that's a different. Uh so what if we're gonna have to go, if you could just answer those questions?
Yeah, we do um charge one municipality for coverage outside our area and I'm working on that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Make sure it's forty percent. Sixty?
Anything else for public safety?
Nope, or no for me.
We will.
When I was chief, guess who took the lead on all replacement of squad cars and purchased the squad?
Don't lie, you were taking the lead on putting new shoes on the horses.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving in, planning commission. Any update on Nekkoli transition?
An update that that needs to be migrated back to pit or if we're going to create another committee, that just needs to without administrator.
Um number eight, any unfinished business from previous meetings? Okay, new business. Any new business? Hello? Going first, yeah. Okay, report from the village administrator.
Yeah, here uh July report, she's from June, uh staff. We're down one as after this report. Uh but the all our attempts are on board and uh working away. Uh no issues with our payroll. It's still being executed at a pretty good rate for the year, so no issues there. And we talked about the administrator application. Uh public works uh mentioned in brief, uh bottom line is after all this work is done, we're probably at thirty percent of that front. There'll still be a fifty thousand dollar uh remaining for what we've allocated for met market street development. So that'll be a discussion that public works will have. If that just stays in the TIF account or gets allocated to another market street project, alley, something. Uh police and fire self uh planetary on their numbers. Those budgets on track. Um the department heads were given the the twenty twenty-four guidance, budget guidance. You all got a copy of that for situation awareness. So they're working internally numbers and then uh the recommendation is that they will be bringing to their next committee meetings their department budgets uh for y'all to look at and start discussing line item issues with that. Uh the the shared revenue has been approved by the governor, so it's good. So we're confirmed on an actual amount for next year. Uh pretty, I mean, it's a decent amount. It's uh being a sixty, fifty to sixty thousand dollar range in addition to what we've been getting shared revenue. So that'll just be additional revenue that will be looked at come budget time. Uh let's talk the village budget. And the good thing about that is it'd be pretty easy to calculate that once the state in December time puts out their estimated sales tax revenue for that year, you can simply just do a mathematical calculation and whatever that percentage is, we'll get that much more. So it'll it'll start indexing over time that it'll only be a couple hundred, maybe a couple thousand dollars, but at least it's going up instead of stagnant. So good on them. Um we had the Nekkoli district meeting, so they are fixing the weed machines. They're taking care of that now. There's no need for village assistance. Uh talk with Diane as employee status because of the short weed session, weed harvesting session. And because of the uh, since the village has been removed from the acquisition of the weed machines, we've recommended to the uh the district that they hire the person on their own either the contractor or whatnot. So it gets us out of the employee management business. Uh and then they can handle that and uh they're they're moving towards that. Uh so really, other than just a seat on the board, which the president's going to be the the new member of that board, uh we're really just gonna observe weed or uh like district issues moving forward. Uh if you look in the window at two forty-one down there, you see they're doing some adjustment work on the inside for the nail depot place. So he's moving out, which is good on them. We have no interested uh uh proposals for the middle section yet. And uh right now, we're still having discussions with Mr. Fidel on any interest in two thirty-one to one right next to him. He's basically shifted from uh us doing any work towards it to it as is number. He's been given that number. Now he's figuring out financially if he's able to do that. Uh and that'll be then purchased outright from the village as is across the street. Uh we are in the final phases of HVAC and plumbing work. I will meet with them tomorrow, uh the the owner and discuss uh the next stage. And the only and then Nick has the uh the lease agreement and final draft. So he'll get that back to the village for a signature. And um in our discussion in the end, we talked to our auditors and whatnot yesterday or Monday. In our discussion, um it's tied to this because it's a big chunk of, it could be a big chunk of this. I I think we're leaning more and more that the staff recommendation to y'all is at the TIF end next year. There's some concerns with not only lease payments, long term, uh potential sales here that will generate a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the village. That if the TIF is still active, that money has to go back into the TIF. It does not sit in general revenue. So that's a concern from the auditor aspect that they're they're highly recommending that if you guys really spend down your TIF, it makes all sense to close it next year, audit it, be done with it. And then any revenue past that point, once you close it, be it from a lease, be it from a sale, then it truly goes right into revenue for the village. That'll be definitely a re- recommended discussion at the FHR level that y'all need to be having when it comes to the TIF account. But uh we're they're still looking at a September, October timeframe for opening uh for across the street there for uh the mission calling. Uh no news on the vibrant spaces. That's that's for our green space here. The only update there, that was W E D C grant. That's a fifty thousand dollar grant to help with turn transitioning that space down there. Uh Solaris did show an interest that they would help us with not only that space, but providing the wifi for our district downtown for anyone outside. So once we saw the mural, uh I sent them an agreement that we will be responsible for that mural longevity wise to make sure it doesn't go into shambles. And since it's on their building, they were very happy with that. And they said now they will be able to look at uh what we want to do here, if anything. So this will be a parks and rec discussion. That they'd be interested in helping us there with either a seating, a gazebo, whatever, turn this into a mini park down here.
A what?
A gazebo.
Gazebo?
Gazebo.
Just checking.
All right. And then uh and then and then added to that would be a free wifi for anyone in the downtown. So good on them. Uh I know we talked donations tonight. Uh this will be an ongoing discussion with not only public safety with but uh FHR. Uh the firefighters' athletic association had a meeting last week after the discussion with the emergency vehicle purchase. And they uh dropped off a seven thousand dollar check uh for the use for the down payment. And the what prompted that is uh in their research and the information they were providing the public safety committee is that there's about an eighteen to twenty-four month lag time on new vehicles. So for the village, if there's any appetite to get their new vehicle, to put a down payment now, they knew that it'd be a hard thing for the village to uh come up with that much money out of budget cycle. They they basically gave that donation. Uh so that'll be a discussion that FHR and the board will have to move forward if that makes it into the twenty twenty-four budget for a new purchase. No changes on permit or it there's been some changes. Uh we're we're still cracking away with some building permits and so on. And the last thing is the Lions picnic, uh the big event for this uh this month. Any question?
No. Report from the search manager.
Yeah, I like to ask for a motion of whoever temporary class we license for the part of expired fire. For one day only.
We got a motion from Brendan. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Alright.
Bye.
Any opposed? Okay, anything else? Alright. Alright, number twelve, trustee comments. Anybody have anything? Okay. Hearing none. Uh the committee meeting calendar for the next thirty days. Um
Jen, did you have something?
I do. Oh, um or no, for the dates.
Oh, okay.
Dates, not for comments.
Just reminder, park and rec will be down at Edwards Alexander. Bring your flip flops and your running around with water.
You're right. I thought it was the second.
Colonel for shaking your head, I'm gonna go and get wet and I'm gonna take a picture.
Under the splash pad.
Put that one in your wall.
Yes, Jen.
Two things, just a reminder that the rain date for um the Lions event would be the same date of our meeting. So if their rain date happens, we'll be here. Sorry, Joe. Um and then.
What was this?
The Lions has their 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 family night, their community events the day before, but their raining date, if they get rained out, would be on our meeting day.
Are you asking or telling?
I'm telling.
Okay, this just like being at home. Thank you, Karen.
One other thing. Yeah, August, the public safety meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, but it says August fourth.
It should be the second, not the fourth. Yeah, it should be the second.
Right to the end.
Right to the end.
I'm sorry.
Okay, one for FHR, what time? Cause we've heard a couple of different.
For the exit interview tomorrow?
No, for August third, four thirty still.
Three August four thirty.
We or four, whatever works for anybody. I'm good. Um let's just make a decision. Four o'clock.
Okay, at least it's consistent with the other.
I'm not sure.
And then tomorrow.
Okay, anything else?
Tomorrow?
On this.
Tomorrow's three o'clock.
Is it? Is it three tomorrow? Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else from anybody? No. Okay, then I will adjourn without objection. I adjourn the meeting at eight.